Okay, welcome to the regular meeting for the City Council of the City of Perry, September 5th, 2023. We're going to call our meeting to order, begin with roll call.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthen.
Here. All right, we have corner. So we're going to begin tonight with our invocation. So we've invited for the Kim Hayes to offer that for us.
I got to watch the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, I guess what, and you all did a fantastic job, and I sure appreciate everything you guys do. We have been privileged to be at First Baptist Church, me as pastor eight years, but our church has been on the corner of Seventh and Fird for 130 years as of October 8th, and we're having a big celebration during that time, and so I invite any of you to come be a part of that. And Curtis mentioned to me that, you know, just to share a couple of things before we pray, tomorrow on Wednesdays, we feed all the high school kids every Wednesday free of charge, and so if you're out in about 11 o'clock tomorrow, be careful, kids will be going from the high school over to First Baptist Church to eat pizza, but we always have 85 to 110 kids from the high school come over on Wednesdays and take part in that. But what a great, what a great place to raise kids. We love Perry, Oklahoma, and I'm grateful for the service that you do and as you work here in our community, and we're grateful to be on the same corner for those 130 years. So thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this council that does such great work, Father, and they have big decisions to make all the time, but especially recently, you have to take an extra time, extra effort, and so we just applaud them and encourage them tonight. Father, they might continue to keep their eyes in the direction with wisdom and guidance from above, and God, that you would just bless them in their endeavors, Father, their families. We know they take a lot of time away from their families, and I just encourage them tonight, and God, again, we just thank you for allowing us to be a part of this great community as we give you praise, and thank you again for how you just work among us, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 130 years. That's amazing. Same spot?
Yep.
It's changed a little bit.
Yeah. All right, well, let's move on here to our first item, the consent agenda.
I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but on the planning commission, maybe minutes, it has my name instead of Brett's.
We're not approving. You're just looking at those. You're just acknowledging those. Thanks for letting me know so I could change it before they do approve them.
Okay.
Good catch.
Motion to approve.
What, Danette Marshall?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthen?
Yes.
All right, item two, skip over that, and three, and we'll jump right down to item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Do we have anybody now for that? So we'll move right along to item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries by the governing body. So with this, we're going to start doing this section just a little bit differently, moving forward. Some of the changes that we want to make is that we want to be able to have, to provide opportunity for us to have that transparency and communication as a council to our community and to ourselves. We're going to use this section to kind of have committee reports, award reports, you know, if there's things that you guys have heard or feel that you would like to discuss or bring up since the last time that we met, this is an opportunity for us as a council to do so. These are items that we won't take in action on, but it's something that we can, we can put on the agenda in the future. So kind of going down that list, we'll start off with proclamations, which we do have one this week, and that proclamation being that we are going to be designating September 17th through September 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in the City of Perry, Oklahoma. Whereas September 17th marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Lawrence Worthen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Perry and the State of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Perry to be affixed this fifth day in the year of our Lord, 22,023, Constitution Week. All right, and then commendations, I don't believe we have any for this week, do we?
Not right now.
Okay. And so next item that we will generally have moving forward would be a award report, which I would allow time for awards, one, if there's anything from you guys, and then moving to two, three, and four. So not to put you guys on the spot for this week, but just to let you know that moving forward, that is what we will be doing. But with that, is there anything that anybody would like to bring up with council for this week?
Several events coming up in the city.
We do. Yep, yeah, we've got celebration coming up. We've got the rodeo coming up as well.
Street dance by Main Street.
Street dance by Main Street.
Fair.
Yep, the fair as well. We've got a circus coming out soon as well.
September 24?
Please, I don't know the date.
It's 24.
Street dance is moving this year?
Yeah, it won't be on the corner by Main Street. It's going to be over in front of the Cochrims.
Is it changing days as well?
Last I know, it's still the day before the parade.
On Friday, Friday night.
Mm-hmm, on that Friday night.
The tractor pulls that night at the fairgrounds as well.
Nice. What time's that?
Seven.
Seven.
And the alumni banquet is that night as well, right?
It's on Friday night.
Friday night?
Good deal. Yeah, there's a lot of events, a lot of opportunity for us to be out in the community and participating, so I encourage you to do that. Moving along, so committee reports. So with this, so occasionally we do form committees. We've had ad hoc committees. We've also had, we've also had a hospital committee formed that we haven't really had an opportunity to allow you guys to report on what you've been working on with that. And so, again, in this portion of our agenda is when we would allow for that to happen. But with that, I mean, guys working on the hospital, anything to update us on that? That we're not going to go over here a little bit later on. Yeah, we've hammered that pretty good.
Worked hard for a while.
But again, like I've said for the last couple of weeks, I've been really proud of the whole council and for you guys for all the work that we've put in, especially with the hospital. We've done a lot of work with that. So.
Did we close on the last lot in the tower maple?
Yes, we did.
Closed on the Cal Street Chapel one.
Great.
There's still some issues with names on the other two of who's signing.
What's the other two?
With the Hughes Rel, with the lots from them, and then the Heritage, which no longer exists, so they had to get somebody who represents those lots to do it.
All right, moving right along. Let's jump into item number six, city manager report.
And on that note, we closed on the county. We also just want to bring up, we have Shred Day coming, Saturday again. We encourage everybody to come out and volunteer your time. It's quite interesting, and you learn quite a bit for brief loops. We have that. We also have the survey. We meant to get how many we had. The last count I knew, we had 89 people had already taken part in the survey. We're asking, good or bad, we want to hear what you have to say, where we think, where you think we're at in the services that are provided for your utilities. How reliable are they cost-wise? I mean, all the good stuff. I had one other thing on my list, and I left it laying on my desk.
Going back to that survey, how's that distributed? How do folks get?
Well, you can go on our website. There are links there. We do have some little flyers that you can come pick up at City Hall. We've had a few people picking them up when they come in to pay their bills. They are there. We are working on getting something set up so we can put on a link on Facebook so that you can click on the link and actually go take it there.
And that ran through September?
It'd go through October.
Through October.
It was in the smut's bill?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, there was a flyer, put in the bills for anybody. And we've got a lot of email responses also, because on our, the people that sign up on Express Bill Pay, when they do that, they can put in with an email address that they can be contacted, and we use it quite often, and we actually sent out some emails, and actually got quite a few responses from that as well. So I can't think of what else I had on this, and it's nothing too important, I guess, but it's all I got for now, I guess.
Nice. Thank you. All right, item number seven, chief financial officer report and monthly invoice.
So I assume you're looking at me on this?
Yeah.
Don't have anything to report this month. You all get the monthly financials on a the second meeting tomorrow. We're not balanced yet for the month of August. We do have, need to set some bank statements in, so we're working on those. We've got the audit in process. We're working on capturing some capital assets and getting those capitalized appropriately, and just normal, everyday stuff.
Who's doing our audits now?
It's Gina Walker. Last two, I think.
This will be two.
This is the first one.
Is this the first?
The C D E W was the last one.
Oh, did they?
That is, yeah. We just.
Which they pulled out several, they pulled out of several of their audit clients there who are doing the work. Peer review, kind of consulting, so.
The question, the only question I have on the invoice, just to kind of understand how it works. So you guys have your monthly accounting services and everything else is just kind of an adder? It goes by hourly or?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. Hourly, time charged at a rate, and then this one, this bill was large.
Right, with the hospital and everything else.
Exactly. I went back and looked. It's the largest bill that RS Meacham has sent in the past four-plus years, I don't know about four years. So I think a lot going on with, well, not, I think there was a lot going on with the change in city manager, union contracts, still 911 stuff going on, and the hospital financing, so.
What's the rate?
Depends upon who's being billed. You've got four CPAs that are being, that are on your account, myself, Russ, Tracy, Brayton, and then you've also got two staff members there.
So it depends on who's working on what?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seen none. Let's jump to our next item here. And so, item eight, city attorney report and monthly invoice. So kind of, same kind of thing. So we're, we're starting to introduce a lot of reports, you know, Meachams, Bryce, you know, they report to us as the council, so I thought it'd be appropriate if, moving forward, they provide a report to us, and that just kind of helps us with the transparency, with the communication that we felt that we were, that wasn't as, wasn't there as much as it should have been in the past. So as part of our strategic planning, you know, this is the direction that we wanted to go, and so that's why we're having these, these reports to us on the agendas moving forward. Sorry, Bryce, go ahead.
And I think this is fantastic, because, you know, for years I've been discriminated against. I haven't had my own spot on the agenda where I can talk about myself, so, you know, I really, really do appreciate, as a lawyer, you know, we love to talk about ourselves, because everybody else is, you know. Well, I prepared this report. I'm sorry I didn't get it to you before this, this meeting, but I was on vacation last week, but it's something to take home and digest. There's a lot of good information here. I'm just going to briefly cover it. The planning and zoning work was really the subject of the planning commission agenda in minutes, and if you haven't, you ought to spend some time reading those minutes. There's new development coming, and we're talking about new ways to provide for development. That's going to be some new propositions, some new proposals, maybe some new ordinances that have come to the planning commission. They're going to help develop that, then it's going to come up to you to be reviewed, so. But that was the start at that planning commission meeting. And as I understand it, that development is going to start presently. Of course, like Merrick said, this was the, the most time that I've spent in with the city by 25%, and that's not the last four years that's ever, but this month. It's been a, it's been a really busy month, and it's really concentrated a lot on the hospital remodel project and the sublease, and that's probably not going to stop until the end of this month, but it will stop this month. And, and so then perhaps we can get back to something more normal. Now, you know, we're going to have to talk about what meeting we're going to have all of the items on, because there's a whole lot of items that are going to happen. The hospital's real property is going to be transferred to the Perry Facilities Authority. The hospital authority's going to need to meet. Their property's going to have to be transferred. There's the whole sublease and the review of the sublease with, with the client, and then there's just the litany of security agreements, sales tax agreements, promissory notes, and the like, and we're going to try to lead you all through those and try to get that to you with plenty of time, but it's going to be, I mean, quite frankly, it's going to be a transcript ethic, you know, to get this done, but this is a, this is a very important thing. Also, this month, we, we did final negotiations and secured the agreements of both the FOP and the IAFF agreement, which, which was good, because both of those were more difficult. There were the issues relating to the resignation of the city manager. We took the safety resource officer agreement, and I recued that, and since there was legislative appropriation statute passed, we put that language in the agreement. Probably the biggest issue that I'm going to be working on the next two months is this next one, and that's municipal court procedure reform. I would say this is the biggest change in municipal court that I've seen in the 45 years of my municipal practice. And to make it real succinct, if you can't pay the fine, if you literally can't pay the fine, you're not going to have to anymore. That's going to be the rule, and I mean can't pay it. There's going to be indigency hearings, hell. If you promise to pay the fine, but you haven't had an indigency or what's called a cost hearing done, and you just signed the agreement, and then you don't pay the fine, and normally we'd issue a warrant, come pick you up, and put you in jail. There will be no more of that. You will be cited and released to a date where we can have that here and determine whether or not you can pay the fine. Now, if after that is a determination that you can pay the fine, but you just refuse to, and then you refuse to in the future, well, then, of course, you know, you can go to jail. But I would say that people on 100% disability that have no other means, you know, of making money, they actually do it by everyone in the, in the household, not just by the one person. They look at everyone in the household. But it's going to make major changes, not only in court procedure, but also in the manner in which the police can execute warrants and how they serve them. So that is coming. If anybody wants to know any more about that, I've got a neat video that lasts for an hour, but we've got to get the forms, and we've got to get that implemented. We've got everybody trained on that. The 911 agreement, at least the draft, that was delivered to the county, and they've had that for a few meetings. There's another meeting this Monday at, at 10 o'clock. So we'll see where the county is. Today, we have Jason Reese, who's the attorney with Altis, Sunlink, Optimum. They don't know what their name is, or maybe they do. They have lots of names, but he's here to answer any questions on the, on the notice, you know, really what that is, and we'll talk about it more perhaps under the item, but they're entitled by state law to a franchise agreement that looks a lot more like the one we did with Blue Peak, because they're here and they're existing, and they just are by state law. It's one of those state laws that, that has passed and done it. Finally, economic development. One of you sitting at the table tipped me off to a interested industrial property person, and I've spoken to them, and they're supposed to get me something about what their plan is, and then we hope to present that to the council. On the next two pages, I have items concerning Perry Lake and Lake McMurtry. You know, water is just so important, and, you know, I will continue to do what I have done in the past. You know, the reason we got McMurtry is because of a loophole in the law. If you don't use the water, you lose it. After, after seven years, the water didn't use it, and we cut 160, or 1600 acres, acre feet of water, which I don't have the gallons, but it's, but it's in the hundreds of, hundreds of millions, billions of gallons per year that we're allowed to take. The last part of this really talks about that, that allocation. We were convinced that we weren't using very much of it until today. I called up COE and said, you know, I, you know, I want the numbers. He apparently went out there or checked, and our, our pump at the wellhouse rolls over at 10 million gallons and starts again. So we haven't been submitting proper numbers at the OWRB. He's now checked the SCADA system, and you'll see the percentage of water uses that we are much higher. So we were afraid. It looked like 6%, 6%, 6%, 6%, 6%, 6%, then 35%, which really didn't look good. Every seven years it resets. We're at 35.38% right now, and we're hoping for that to be substantially more. If you don't use the water rights, then, then, then you can lose them to the public user. It's very important, and I've been speaking on that issue to administration for years. I also have detailed out the issues concerning Lake McMurtry, and that is Stillwater's plan to store raw water from Cal in Lake McMurtry, which is, they've got, they've got a plan. We've requested the planning engineering report on that. It could affect the quality of the water and the type of treatment that we have to administer out at the, at the wellhouse. So it's something that we need to look at real hard, and, and I just want to let you, let you know who we are. On Perry Lake, there is a bit here about the 404 permit update. I've updated you before on that. We have a meeting on Monday at, at, I believe, 10 o'clock, where, oh, golly, that conflicts with the county meeting. Well, I will be here. Amanda will need to be over at the county. But, but we're going to be talking about what exactly is going on here, and, you know, as you know, we were permitted. Well, this was supposed, this thing was supposed to start getting constructed in December, but because of, because of new rules and new interpretations, we're having to go through a 404 permitting process. It looks good. There's going to need to be some mitigation that will probably be done both in Noble County and Lake McMurtry. and Lake McMurtry. We'll go over that in more detail in the future. And then finally, the one piece of property that we have acquired, but we haven't had a jury trial on it yet. And that's the Van Meadows case. That's coming up for a mediation hearing. We will have an agenda item on your next Monday agenda to discuss that. Because when you go to mediation, you need some authority to go there. At this point, the court has awarded $72,000. It's a major piece of property. This is where the auxiliary dam, the major dam, is going to be built. We need this property. And we've got it. Initially, I think that they wanted to argue that there was no public purpose in the taking. But thank goodness, they missed their deadline in filing that argument. And so, it's only on the issue of damages. So, that's my report. I look forward to it. My next one, this one's very detailed. My next one may be a bit more abbreviated. But I'm going to try to take these topics and move these forward for you and add the other ones. As can be seen, this is a very busy city and a very forward-thinking city. And, you know, there's a lot of legal work to be done if you want to be a well-protected. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about it and answer any questions.
I know the E911 board meeting, albeit that, on Monday as well. What was the other meeting that you were going to be at the same time?
Well, that 10 o'clock meeting on this 404 permitting will be at City Hall.
Oh, at City Hall.
And then there's also the, next week, on the 20th, is the mediation. I need to have, we'll talk about that on the 18th. I'll need to have some representative there. I mean, if one of you wants to be there, I text you, Mayor, if you want it to be there. If not, it's going to be conducted by Zoom. If we come up with a number that everyone is comfortable with, that we may be willing to negotiate to, you know, the acting city manager could be there just as the representative to convey up to that number if we choose to.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I think it also would be good if there's anybody on council that would like to join in on some of these meetings, if you guys have time. I'd invite you to do that.
Yes.
We saw as we got involved with the hospital. It was good.
404 meeting.
Okay. That'll be the one. Yeah, I'll be at the E911 meeting as well. And so, for the rest of the board, as long as we don't have five or more of us there.
I think the mediation, we'll have an opportunity to talk at the next meeting. On the 18th, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
I have one question on the reform for the municipal court procedures. Was that federal or state?
That's state.
Okay.
And I really think it comes out of what occurred in Ferguson, you know, which was, you know, the tragedy a number of years ago. There was a federal report, and that may be what you're thinking about. Federal report came out of Ferguson, which said that the Ferguson police and the municipal court seemed to be singling out the poor, you know, racial minorities and the like. And I think that, well, at least the state of Oklahoma has looked at that and said, you know, we're not going to do that here. There are going to be no debtors' prison, you know. And constitutionally, there can't be a debtors' prison. But I think in Ferguson, they seem to indicate that the way that policy was being administered, it seemed to be that way. So, this is a major change and everyone's going to have to learn it because we are not going to want to arrest anyone that deserves a site and release. That cannot happen, so.
And it'll have a financial impact as well.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, it'll have a financial impact.
So, Bryce, have you guys heard about this or?
From Bryce.
From Bryce? How's this going to affect you and the department?
So much has changed in this profession. It's just another loophole, just like legislative updates. It's just a change and we've got to deal with it.
Okay. Thank you. Anything, Bales, have anything? All right. Let's move right on to item nine. Discussion of or nomination and appointment of councilperson for Ward Three Post Two. And if nominated and appointed, administer the oath of office. So, Kevin, his last day, how many days ago was it? Where are we at?
July.
Is it the end of July?
Just a little bit.
We don't have much time, I don't think, because we had 60 days from his last meeting.
I think we're at 30. 30, yeah, I think.
Okay. So, has anybody talked to anyone or had any considerations?
Yeah. I'd like to nominate somebody.
Sure.
I would like to nominate Randy Rupp for Ward Three Post Two.
Yeah, Ward Three Post Two.
I've talked to him several times and he's very interested, so.
Okay.
It was a.
Randy Rupp.
He's ready.
Also, good to.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other thoughts or comments on that? I think none, other than he's the net's neighbor?
Couple of clauses down.
A couple of clauses down. Let's have roll call on that.
Okay, Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffey.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Okay. So, that seat is filled. We'll have a little chat with Randy and administer the oath of office our next meeting. All right. So, we've got that taken care of. Let's move on to item 10. Discussion and approval of professional services agreement with Myers Engineering Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Water Treatment Facility Treatment Plant. Repair in an amount not greater than $40,000. So, does anybody have any questions on this?
Is this 40,000 part of the 250,000?
No, I think it adds up to 300,000. I think that's shown. Did we include that budget?
It says 290,000.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a budget and those numbers are added together.
Right. It's nice to see that it's considerably less than the million that we set aside for that project.
Great savings.
Yeah. That's a big savings on that.
Motion approved agreement.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a couple of seconds on that. And then when you're ready, we'll have a roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffey.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right. Item 11. Consider approval of resolution number 2023-08. A notifying the public, a public hearing to be held on the second day of October 2023 at or after 6:15 PM in the city council chambers of the city. Which hearing is held pursuant to the request of Seabridge Acquisitions LPDBA, Sunlink Communications, Optimum, request for an extension and renewal of its right to operate the community antenna's television system within the corporate limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma. Bryce, do you want to explain this one?
Yes. And I think the background, we've set out some of this. We've had negotiations with Seabridge. And on December 12, 2017, they notified the city of their desire to renew their permit. That puts into action certain federal protections and certain federal time requirements that have to occur. But negotiations pretty much stalled. We did have a hearing. Came before the public and we did have a hearing. But that was in 2018 and now it's five years later. So, I spoke to the mayor about this and we talked about the fact that we want to make sure that the public, you know, has a right to be heard. It is five years later. And so, this is what you do. You put a notice in the paper and you have a hearing on it. Now, the one thing that I've mentioned, I think, in my report is that state law does cover this. It says that if you issue a license permit or certificate which is more favorable than the one that your current cable operator is operating under, that they have a right to come in and to request those things which are more favorable. Okay? We do have a very, very detailed CATV agreement that stems from all the way back with what's before Cox, TCI to Cox to Sunlink. And it's very, very detailed. As you know, the one on Blue Peak, it was much more succinct. This still will still be required to collect 5% of the gross receipts revenue. You have dedicated most of that money to running your TV operations and, you know, what we used to call PIN. But that's really up to you. But by state law, we've got to give them what Blue Peak has. However, they have to show that that does identify the future cable-related community needs and interests and that they have performed well. They have done what they said that they were going to do and what they promised to do under the current franchise agreement. So, that's really the purpose of the hearing, to hear from the public, what does the public want, and also to determine whether they have performed under the current licensing agreement. I could tell you, at the last public hearing, I had a finding after reviewing everything. They're up to date with insurance, the payments and all that, that they were. I don't know, they haven't been operating under one, but I want to make sure that they have been following it. I believe that you have, both in Enid. I've represented Enid also on this extension over that same period of time. And so, we need to check those out and make that report and then hear from the public. So, that's really the purpose of it. Give notice, set a date for your, October 2nd. But you can make that date whenever you want. I just picked that date up because it was, you know, gave a bit of time.
Any questions on that? Anybody? So, this approval is for having the public hearing on the first meeting of October.
What's the first date? First, I don't know.
Motion to approve public hearing?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a couple of seconds.
Always.
Yeah. Ready to have a roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffey.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right. Thank you. We'll be having that on October 2nd. So, we'll move on to item 12. So, this is consider appropriation of $2,450,000, consisting of $1,650,000 from the general fund and $800,000 from the PMA for Hospital Capital Improvement Project. And so, with this, we also have Stephen Taylor here with us today to kind of report on where our GMP is turned up at. So, I'll turn it over to you. Thanks, Stephen.
So, we got back with the design team and the construction manager to see what we could do to reduce costs. We did get down to just under 9.1 million, about 9.06. That gets us down to two observation beds. And so, and that allowed us to reduce the scope of adding some additional space right there where the new, quote, main entrance is going to be. We did reduce the size of the canopy that is going to be out there. And so, that got us down to that 9.06 number. There is still pretty good sized contingency in there. I think about 1.3 million. You know, we're still at 30% complete for construction documents. The only thing I would say, not necessarily a concern, but we still have to address is there's no scope work in there for office relocation, for business office and those type of individuals in administration, partly due to, we took that out because they were going to be located in the old patient wing with some potential for other things, maybe utilizing that space. We're going to try to figure out another spot for them. But that work would, I would think, be very minimal. And with the contingency that's built in, would think that that could be accounted for. So, and while we don't have the final equipment budget, it will be below the 1.4 billion that was indicated.
Wow. Yeah, that's a great job, Stephen and the rest of your team for doing that.
Took everybody working together and seeing how we could still meet the needs of the citizens. And, you know, we think with two observation beds, you know, that will get us going. And, you know, we talked before, there's nothing to say that in the future, if we see that there's a need, that we couldn't change that and do something different. We just utilize that space for something else that could easily be converted if we needed to at a later date.
Awesome. Thank you. That's incredible that you guys came below the 9.1, that original budgeted amount.
Didn't think we were going to get there.
Yes. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so, with that, we still need to push forward with the amount that we kind of originally proposed so that we can go forward, move forward with those new market tax credits. Because we need to get that ripped up, hurt, ripped up. We need to get that, we need to get that put together moving forward for Rich and McAfee Taft to be able to close on the new market tax credits. And so, I think that this consideration for setting aside the amount that we agreed upon from the beginning, even though they came just below the 9.1, it'll still be safe because we still want to leave a little bit of room for that contingency. But Meredith or Bryce, do you guys have anything to add on to that?
No, I think that if you did 1.65 on this item and you did $100,000 on the PMA item, that I think, based on the email, did you get the forward that I sent you from Rich?
Yes.
$71,000? You know, I think that would do it. If you want to do a little bit more, because, you know, it could be more, you could do that. But, I mean, that would, what would you say, Meredith?
That last bullet point on the agenda item, it's 200,000 for the Electric Capital Improvement Right Now.
Right.
So, increasing that by 100,000 to make that 100,000.
No, if we're getting 1.65 here, I would think that we would just need an extra 100,000.
Okay.
Is that, you've been involved, Mayor, a lot more with the numbers. I mean, we were wanting to come up with $800,000.
Right.
That was the purpose. But you've gotten the numbers down now. Rich has it and we need $71,000 to make.
Right, to close that gap.
To close the gap. You know, if you want it to be comfortable, if you allocated the 200,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund, you know, that would, I mean, that would do it. And if it was less than that, it'd be less than that. That would be very, it would be very conservative, but it might be needed. So, I would say with this item, you would appropriate the 1.65 from the general fund that's set out here. And then, under PMA, do the 200,000 of reserved electric capital fund when we get to that item on the agenda. And that should make it work. You should have more than enough.
And if we don't need to use it for that, we can.
It goes back into it.
Absolutely. It won't be used.
It can go back into that fund and that project. We won't be sacrificing, obviously, as a sidewalk project, that was something that was very important to us. And as well as continuing the water project, getting underneath river, that's something we still need to. the river, that's something we still need to look at. We're having lots of, lots of breaks in our water lines.
And we're certain that's the first two bullet points at $1.65 and then 200 and not 300?
Based upon the. Yes.
And leaving out the third bullet point?
Yes, leaving out the third.
Motion to appropriate $1.65 from the general fund and 200 from electric capital for hospital improvement project.
Set them.
Okay. We have motion in a second. Let's have roll call.
Calderon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Orville?
Yes. All right. So we'll send that information over to Rich, so he can get moving on the new market tax credits course. And so, moving on down, item 13, we have introduction of Ms. Kathy O'Connor with Coaline, who's going to be joining us and helping us out with her strategic planning. So everybody, this is the infamous Kathy that we've been talking about for so long.
Nice to meet all of you. Good to be here this evening. So I guess you've been talking about me. I don't know what you've been talking about, but I can maybe tell you a little bit about me and the work that I think we can do here together in Perry. So, my name's Kathy O'Connor. I have probably almost 40 years of experience in city government at this point in my life. I worked for the city of Oklahoma City for almost 30 years. When I retired from the city, I left as an assistant city manager who had also been the city's finance director for 12 years. So, part of my responsibilities, beginning when I was finance director and continuing on while I was an assistant city manager, was economic development projects and redevelopment. So, I was the person who led several different teams to bring different projects to Oklahoma City, including Bass Pro Shops and Dell Computers and the restoration of the Skirvin Hotel. In 2011, we decided to create a independent nonprofit to manage all of the city's economic development and redevelopment work, working with our Chamber of Commerce and the city very closely, but we set up an independent agency. We also ran the city's urban renewal authority. I left the city in 2011 to go run that organization. So I did that until about 18 months ago when I started my consulting firm. So, everybody, I kind of retired from public life and went into the private sector to try to see what I could do as a consultant. So, a little bit more background, and I'm probably telling you all things you already know, the Maslin Foundation reached out to me through the Oklahoma City Community Foundation to see if I would be interested in providing some expertise to Perry with strategic planning, maybe some financial work, maybe some economic development work. So that's pretty much what brought me here tonight. I provided a scope of work to the city manager and to the foundation that I think they've approved a grant for that has several different components to it. The first one of those is kind of a goal setting and strategic priorities workshop that would be the first thing that we would do. And I know that Johnson and Associates has already done a study of some of the topics and themes in Perry. I would say that the difference between what I think we should do and what they did is that their scope was very specific to what can we do to spur economic development in Perry? And what I think we probably need to do is take a step back and maybe take a bigger picture look at what do the priorities for Perry need to be? What is, what are, what does the city council, you as the elected officials in Perry, see as what should we be working on? What are our priorities to grow the community, to meet the needs of our citizens, to address some of the, you know, the Johnson Associates reports did identify some themes and some issues that I think will come up again. I'm not saying that they won't, but, you know, how do you all feel about those things? And then how do we go about setting some tasks and some goals on how to get there? So that's really what I see is what the next step is. Usually, I've done some of this work, similar work in Chickasha where I'm also still working with them on now setting up a new tax increment financing district and working on some downtown redevelopment projects with them. They're, you know, they're very much like you. They have a historic downtown that has some great buildings and they have access on the interstate. And, you know, so they've done some retail development on the interstate, but now they really want to do something downtown. So they're trying to balance both of the things that I think are true here too. So, that's kind of what, so typically I start out with just some kind of like Survey Monkey survey. We'll decide on a list of questions, kind of to get at, just to have some background information for the workshop so that we're not going in it cold, you know, that we've already done a little bit and I can kind of share the results of that to get the discussion started at an, you know, at a further along point than just starting from scratch. So, anyway, that's, I think the next step in the process would be to try to schedule some times that work for you all to do that workshop. We're probably looking at about four hours, four to five hours, so like a half a day. We can start in the, you know, start early and work through lunch, or we can start about lunchtime and work till 5:00. So it's just whatever works best for you all. So really what I would like to come from that is a vision for Perry, this kind of SWOT analysis, you know, with all the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, looking at what themes emerge, is there a consensus to pursue any of the ideas that are identified? And then goals for the community, what would you like Perry to be? And so those are just kind of some of the things. I may have to do some additional stakeholder interviews. You all may have people that you want to invite to that workshop that are community leaders, Chamber of Commerce people. In Chickasha, they actually opened it up to the public, which was kind of interesting. I wasn't expecting it, but we ended up with about 40 people there. That has some, you know, pluses and minuses, but they have, they have some folks that are not very enthusiastic about some of the things that the city's done. So those people, they wanted to make sure that they could come and hear what I had to say and listen to me, so that's what we did. And it all turned out great. So, that's kind of the first step. The scope of service also includes a step to review city services and finances. There were some things that came out of the Johnson Associates study and I'm not telling you all anything you need to know, that you've got very high utility rates. So maybe a little bit of a look at that and some other things. And then further work on developing goals and strategic priorities and some recommendations for how to implement those. So, that's kind of what I see as the work that we need to do. And I think the next step is to try to find some dates to do that. I would like to try to find some time to sit down and maybe talk to some of you even individually, if you're open to that, so we can set up that time as well. And I can give you, I don't mind you having my contact information and we can just try to set that up for those one-on-one meetings through email or something like that. So, is that?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Any questions for me? Anything you want to ask me about or anything else that you'd like me to try to cover in our, in the work that we do together?
I'm just happy you're here.
I'm happy I'm here. It's a pretty drive up here, by the way.
I think it'll be good that you're here, you know, with ideas and resources that we didn't even know about or didn't think up before. And I think that's what we've really needed for a long time. So, I really just appreciate you being here for the services.
And, you know, one of the things I did in Chickasha that we can do is really kind of started it out with a presentation about kind of what economic development tools are available to cities and kind of how they work and what they are. They really wanted to know more about tax increment finance and business improvement districts and we talked about historic tax credits and new markets tax credits. Obviously, I heard you all, you have a new markets deal on your, on your hospital, which I think is great. I do that work as well. I'm doing some work on a project in Shawnee right now. So, just kind of talking about what some of the tools are that are available to you and, you know, helping you think a little bit more about how the city can leverage the, you know, your regulatory authority and your financial ability and your kind of power of the pulpit to get things done, you know, your, the public aspects of speaking in public and talking about projects and being supportive of trying to make things happen. So.
Good deal. Yeah, we're excited. We've got, we've got a pretty active council now. You know, in the past, the council hasn't done as much as we have as a group, I don't think. And so that's exciting. Kind of talking about the dates, are there dates? This month, we have a lot of events coming up, especially next, next week.
Next.
Yeah, next week. We've got a lot of things going on. How are, how are you guys' schedules looking the second half of September?
I don't think I have anywhere to go, so hopefully it should be here listed.
Hopefully, wow, all right.
So, we can take advantage of that.
Yeah.
The 18th is not good for me, but.
Just that date or that we?
Just, just that day.
Just that day.
That's the 18th through the 2nd, 3rd. I'll look at what calendar.
Yeah, the week of the 18th. So the 18th, we have a city council meeting and you're busy that evening. But 19th, 20th, 21st, can we say again? How are those dates looking for you guys? And then with our group, sometimes during the day, it doesn't really work. We've got quite a few that work over at Titchfield and Subsite and that might be difficult for you guys to pull away.
We could do an evening. I mean, the evening, like, or the late afternoon to evening could work.
That's typically when we've done our planning sessions so far, have been in the unions after 5:00.
20th is good, 20th is.
Do we want to?
That's the week of the Oklahoma.
Yeah, so 22nd would be better for me.
Do we want to leave that week for the one-on-one type thing?
We could.
Do you want to meet together first or do you want to individual?
We do need a little bit of time to get the survey out.
Yeah, the survey and.
So I need, you know, before we have the workshop, I need a couple weeks to get that survey out and give people a chance to respond, so we may want to look at.
In October?
Yeah, like the first week of October might be better.
Okay.
That works.
So Monday, that first week of October, we have council meeting. And so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I'm good.
Do you have those dates?
I'm good.
If it's the day, surely I can swing it.
Right.
How about Tuesday?
Okay, Tuesday and the 3rd?
Like at 3:00 or 4:00?
Spore work for people?
I'll be off at 4:00 so I can get directly here.
Sure.
October 3rd?
October 3rd, around 4:00.
October 3rd at 4:00.
So that'll give you time to get that survey out for the whole month of September.
I will send, can I send the group a sample of questions?
Yeah.
Should I send them just to you?
You can send it to me and I can send it out to everybody. I mean, we can give you all of our contact info too. Just make sure that.
Hopefully you're going there.
Line Carbon.
Yeah.
VCC.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't want to, where's your city, yeah, I don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act or anything, so. Believe me, I know.
We have that workshop here or at the Heritage.
I'll talk to them and we'll have it over there. I'm comfortable. Better chairs. Better chairs, better table.
Whiteboard.
They've got whiteboard, yeah. Big screen TV in, put everything up on.
Okay.
It's a better workspace.
And then if we need, you know, obviously we'll need some follow-up meetings, so, and we could even maybe do some of it at the end of a council meeting if you don't have a ton on your agenda and don't, you know, don't mind staying for a little bit later. That might work just as well too.
Right, okay.
So, you all typically meet on Mondays, right?
Yes, the first and 3rd Monday. Yeah, first and 3rd Monday of the month is when we meet.
4:00, we'll plan on the Heritage Center.
I'll get that booked for us. And then, so between now and then, the survey is going out amongst us, amongst, for the community, how do you want to do that? Do you want us to help you?
Um, you know.
Have Christine help you out with that or?
Typically, it'd be great if I had like a contact.
Or put it on like the city's Facebook page.
Yeah, and that you all just invite people that you want to be there. I don't need to do the inviting.
Okay.
You can do the inviting.
Yeah.
And, because I don't, I mean, I don't know anybody. So, I think it's better if it comes from you or, you know, if you want to put it on the city's Facebook page, that's fine. It's like, you know, just, we just need to make sure that we have space and all of those kinds of things, so.
So with that, do you have a list of questions that you already typically use for that?
I can read through the ones I did for Chickasha and I think we'd want to change these a little bit, but, you know, what do you think is the biggest opportunity to create new investment in, I'm going to change all this to Perry, in Perry? What characteristic about Perry do you value the most? Other than, they have a big deferred maintenance issue in Chickasha, so they're, one of their questions was, other than deferred maintenance of city infrastructure, what are the weaknesses in Chickasha? Like, you know, it's like, let's acknowledge, we all know we have that one, so what else is there?
That's a good question for us.
Same question here. What do you think are the strengths of Perry? What are the highest priorities for you, for what you want to see built in Perry? What are you hopeful for? What do you believe is the cause of any positive momentum in Perry right now? If you had all the resources necessary and community consensus, what change would you want to make in Perry? And then about the workshop, we usually ask some questions about what do you want to get out of the workshop? What do you want to accomplish? What worries do you have about the workshop? And what are you hopeful for in the workshop? Just so we get all that out.
All those being free text, I assume?
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, yeah, just fill it in, yeah. And we can, we can maybe work on those a little bit if you want to do some broader kind of strategic planning and not just, they were really focused on creating new investment, but we can do that too. We can try to keep it pretty short so that people don't have to spend a ton of time filling it out. I was looking at the survey that Johnson and Associates did and it was long. It was like 20-some questions and people just, they lose interest and they say yes, you know, and that isn't helpful. We need, we need to know more details, so try to keep it short.
Good deal. Yeah, if you want to shoot those questions over to, you can send them over to me and I can send them out to everybody.
Okay. I'll do that tomorrow.
So if we do that and, see, today's Tuesday, so maybe we'll get those questions out here to council and then we can take a look at them if there's any questions you want to add or kind of tweak a little bit. If we can do that, get that in by the end of this week, so at the beginning of next week, we can start blasting that out to the community or whoever we want to send that out to. Start getting that out and then we'll spend September gathering as much information on that survey as we can.
Yeah. We'll have to shut it down, you know, a few days ahead of time, ahead of the workshop just to collate all the answers. Usually what I do is I. Usually what I do is I, I'll get a bunch of, you know, flip charts and write, I'll write everything down ahead of time, and then it's all ready to just talk about.
Right, yeah, that would work out pretty good, because then we can also use that survey, but we can talk to the chamber and get a booth set up at Cherokee Celebration at the parade, and folks can answer questions, and that would get a lot of, get a lot of people.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, before they start drinking, before they get the turkey legs and alcohol.
Well, I don't know, sometimes that helps.
Because then that'll give us next week for the survey, the next one, so the week of the 17th as well, and then the week of the 24th, we can shut that down and gather the information. So that survey will be out in two weeks, with celebration being during that, and we'll, I'm sure we'll get a lot of surveys in there if we can set up a booth with that. For October 3rd meeting, we'll have all that information put together, and we can go, start going over it.
Yeah, maybe I'll see if we can do, like, a QR code that they can...
Oh, perfect, yes.
Yes, that people could just do with their phone, and then it takes them right to the survey.
Right.
See if I can figure that technology out.
Yeah.
My helper to do that, my young person.
Perfect, all right. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Kathy?
Have you had an opportunity to go around town at all, or seen any of the facilities yet?
Just drove around a little bit, but I will do more.
Yeah, and you can, if you want to, in one of these, one of these weeks, we can have you come up, and then we can take you on the facilities tour, though. So we went on a facilities tour as a council.
Yeah.
And so maybe one or two of us can take you around and...
That would be great.
Show you the facilities that we went and saw, because there was a lot of, there were a lot of issues, and there was a lot of potential that we saw in a lot of the buildings and the property that we have as a city.
And our IT guy just sent me a message so that he can help you with the QR code if needed.
Oh, excellent.
Sitting right in there.
Oh, okay. Operating the cameras or something.
He says, yeah.
Okay, terrific, excellent.
Yeah, but I'll get in touch with you on kind of touring around and everything, and
Okay, yeah.
If we can do that, you know, even before the workshop, then you'll have a kind of a good idea and rundown of where we're at as far as the city, and bring those thoughts as well, because we still need to keep going over the facilities tour that we went on.
Do you have any scheduled days you're going to be up here before October, or...
I can schedule them.
No, I was just one of the few.
I don't have them scheduled, but we can go ahead and schedule them, or just let me know what days work for you all, and...
That's kind of what I was asking, is what worked for you, if you're going to be up here already, or...
I'm not planning on it, but, I mean, I just haven't gotten that far yet, so...
Yeah, we can work on that and schedule them, you know, once or twice, so you can come up and do that, and then I'll let everybody else know what days, or what day Kathy will be up here to go visit the facilities and everything. If anybody wants to join, you can, as long as we keep it under 5:00.
I didn't get to take part in that first one because of the conflict schedule, so when you do that, please let me know.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that.
Yep. Yep, we can do that. All right. Well, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, looking forward to working with all of you, and it's really great to meet everybody. Be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that takes us to item 14, new business. Anything to bring up? All right, moving on to item 15.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion, every one seconds. Let's have roll call.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Excuse me, Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
There, all right. So let's have our regular meeting for the Perry Municipal Authority, September 5th, 2023, call the meeting to order, and let's have roll call.
And Brown, excuse me, Caldwell.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second. Let's have a roll call when you're ready.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, item two, consider appropriation of $2,450,000 consisting of $1,650,000 from the general fund and $300,000 from the PMA for the hospital capital improvement project. So this one, we need to pass what we passed before, so the 1.65 and the 200.
So moved.
1.65 from the general fund and two from the PMA.
And then 200 from, yeah, the PMA, which is going to come from which of the capital improvement funds?
Second, which probably doesn't get one.
All right. Let's have roll call.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes, and item three. Who wants to adjourn? All right, motion and second, roll call when you're ready.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. So we're going to have our regular meeting for the Perry Facilities Authority, September 5th, 2023, call the meeting to order, and have roll call.
Caldwell.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown. Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, item one, the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Roll call when you're ready.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
What was your name? It's Brown. I don't have it on here, but the thing did load earlier, so. Brown, Coffee.
Yes.
Thank you. Brown Coffee. White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes, all right, item two. Who would like to adjourn? All right.
Let's go through this without stumbling this time.
All right.
Caldwell.
I said no, let's up your deal, since you don't hire that.
Yeah, no, that got recorded.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.